Good evening. I'd like to call the Dartmouth School Committee meeting for the December 12th, 2022. To order, please, would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would ask if you have any cell phones, electronic devices, if you would kindly put them on silent or vibrate. Appreciate it. Also, too, I'd like to let you know that this meeting is being broadcast and livestreamed at DH, our high school TV media, and also being recorded for Dartmouth Community Cable Television, Channel 9 and 18, and is shown throughout the weeks on Channel 9 and 18 at different times, and we thank them for that. Roll call, please, Ms. Gunther.
John Noons.
Yep.
Mary Waite.
Here.
Kathleen Amaral. Shannon Jenkins.
Here.
Chris Oliver.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Amaral is a little under the weather tonight and unable to make it. We hope she gets well quick. Okay, first item on the agenda, we got a couple of minutes. We'll take the approval of the minutes of November, regular session minutes of November 21st, 2022.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
By Mr. Oliver, second by Dr. Jenkins on the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Executive session for the same date.
I'll move with the usual stipulation that the matters for which they are intended are complete.
Moved by Ms. Waite.
Second.
Second by Dr. Jenkins on the motion. Any discussion? Chair hearing then, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We still got a couple of minutes.
A little too fast on approving those minutes there.
Yeah, we did. You know, it's, you know, it is what it is, you know, that type of deal. All right.
Yeah, and I now have to add something later he wants to speak at the end, but I can do, all right, I'll do a couple of updates. Just as a reminder, we have a whole bunch of concerts coming up, et cetera, one tonight, matter of fact, and one special one at the Zeitarian on December 20th, the orchestra will be playing. We had a, we started our work for Profile of a Graduate, actually, we're calling it Profile of a Learner, and we had mentioned this before, our work was starting with Envision Learning, so we had a full group come together last week, on Friday, actually, and we used the town hall, but they came and, an in-person, that was our first in-person meeting to start that work. We had admin and teachers from every building, as well as central office. About 16 to 20 people came together to start that work, and they'll be the people to bring for that work forward to the schools and run focus groups, so anyway, it was, it was really, really a good session to have all levels there. As a reminder, on January 7th, we will have the dedication of the court, Steve Gaspar Court, so Andy, Chris Affoli, and others are working on that. And today, we actually had a virtual meeting with our attorney, Kat Lyons, about the updated suspension law, so we made sure our admin team was fully aware of how to go about that, along with any updated information on the bullying practices that Ms. Townsend presented. So we had a full complement of admin at that meeting today. And also, we've been sending folks to public relations and crisis management meetings as well, just to keep people updated on how to deal with any kind of crisis and those kinds of things. So that's kind of it, but as I said, at the end, I want to mention, Rob Parati wants to come up and say a few words during my update.
Yep, that's fine, no problem. Any questions for the superintendent at this point? No? Okay, fine. All right, that being said, I've got 5:05, so I will call the public hearing for school choice for school year 2023, 2024 to order. Just so that everyone is aware, this was advertised in the New Beaufort Standard Times last week for a hearing time of 5:05. I got up this morning with the snow, and, oh my God, but fortunately, it's gone, thank you. So, that being said, anyone who wishes to speak on school, the school choice hearing, please come up to the podium and state your name, please.
Hello, my name's Renee Viera, Dartmouth Educators Association President for too many years to count and co-president for the last, this is second, second year. I'm a bit exasperated this evening. I will speak on school choice. All these people around you here take care of the children that you folks vote in to be able to make a choice to come to Dartmouth schools. But I'm asking myself right now, why would you want to send your child here? When you've got, how many people, 150 people or so educators came in? A few of us would like to speak and share, and you closed down public comment in the face of all these folks here behind you. I have always done my best to be respectful when communicating with you folks in public every single time. But I guess this is how my legacy is going to be. Renee Viera is going to walk out and she's going to make, make a statement at the podium. I'm embarrassed. I'm embarrassed for my clients. When it comes to school choice, we are always here to do a good job for our students, always. But we do tell you that with school choice comes headaches, okay? It's not that we don't want to teach the children, it's not that we don't want to educate others, okay? However, our classrooms are overloaded at times. We have students in some classrooms that are over 30.
Mr. Chair, I would like to recommend that we recess.
Yep, but I'm going to head there. I am going to head there in about two seconds. The agenda does not have public comment on it tonight. Nope, not tonight. Because the choice is the chair, and the chair decided not having school choice.
Mr. Chair, may I please?
Ms. Viera, if you're going to speak on school choice, please do. If not, I will ask you to sit down. Dr., Mr. Oliver.
So, first of all, we need to wrap up, before I can comment on anything other than school choice, we need to wrap up the school choice hearing, because I am very dismayed, myself, Dr. Jenkins included, that public, that the public hearing, I'm sorry, the
Public comment.
Public comment was not on tonight's agenda. I did not see that. I would, myself, as well as my colleague, would have appreciated a heads up. I know we should be looking through this. However, it's been on every other meeting agenda, and I'm very dismayed.
There's been, no, no, there's been a few that I've been shared, that for whatever
It was on there, you took it off.
Okay, people, can I speak?
No, can we speak?
No. So, okay, Dr. Jenkins.
I agree with Mr. Oliver. I'd like to finish the public choice, the school choice, and then I would like to have a discussion, once that hearing is closed, about public comment, right? This is a decision of the school committee, right, to take that off, all right? So I appreciate what everyone's saying. I would ask that we just hold off until we can close the school choice hearing, and then we'll have a discussion.
I have to say, I was surprised and disappointed to see that public comment was not included. It just was, I thought it had to be an oversight. It just, it was unbelievable. So, you know, I am disappointed as well, and I, you know, I hope we get to hear from, and we need to hear from everyone that's here.
Do you have anything else, Ms. Viera?
So I would just like to say, recognizing how valuable this school choice is for the district financially, and also for students who are able to attend Dartmouth schools, let us just keep in mind the timeframe in which students are selected. I know this year at the high school, there were some students that seemed to roll in a little bit late, and then that causes them to be behind and us to try to have to sort of catch them up, navigate them up to where everyone else is. And also, again, as I was trying to make my last statement, we do have to concern ourselves with class sizes in some of our classes. At Dartmouth High School this year, we really did struggle with some large classes. So let's hope that even students with school choice, that their schedules are made ahead of time, so that, you know, we can better balance the schedules for, for all students and, and staff, because it just, it's better for everyone when we don't have classes of 17 and then classes of 30 for the same, you know, for the same subject. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Viera.
Anyone else with a comment on school choice? None? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on school choice.
I'll second that.
Motion by Dr. Jenkins, second by Mr. Oliver on the motion. Any discussion? Chair hearing then, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries unanimously, school choice hearing is closed. Mr. Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just so the, the audience, members here can understand, I would recommend that maybe we look at other matters that may have not been anticipated to have some public comment during then. Your pleasure, but that was my thoughts.
Dr. Jenkins.
I would agree, and I, again, this is for the, for the audience here, that we have to follow the agenda as it was published, but there's a slot on the agenda at the end where one of us will make a motion to open public comment, and we'll hear from everyone. So I ask that you just be patient, we will come back around to this.
Next item on the agenda is under rolled business, is the superintendent's search. And pleased to welcome Mr. Jim Hardy from MASC. Jim?
Good evening, everyone. For those that I have not yet met, my name is Jim Hardy. I'm a field director with the Mass Association of School Committees. And in a recent meeting, the Dartmouth School Committee voted to engage MASC in the search for a successor superintendent of schools. It's my pleasure to be back, having facilitated the search in 2014, 2015, and the information I'm passing around, some of that is from that timeline, from that time period. And just to show a comparison of the schedule, since we're on a shorter timeframe this time than last. First, let me say that as submitted in the proposal, I would be the lead person, supported by initially Glenn Kuchar, the executive director of MASC, but however, when we get involved in a search, it's the entire staff that, that is part of that process. The information that I pass around this evening, for the first document, is the timeline from 2014, 2015. And if you hold it next to the draft timeline that I have provided you, you notice that the key difference is the two-month starting component, starting two months later. By putting some, by compressing some things in the schedule, however, we end up about three weeks off, meaning the, the date to appoint a superintendent, instead of being March 30th, would be April 24th. But within that timeframe, we would be able to accomplish everything within the scope that the RFP included. So today would start us off, December 12th, with an, with an overview of the process. Now, some things that have changed dramatically since 2014 are the in-person focus groups, mostly because of the pandemic and the consequences of, of that. However, we still do offer them, and would be willing to, to do those as well. But we have, our experience has found that we get way more participation in the online survey component. And I'll get to the survey in a little bit as well. On average, focus groups generate about 45 to 50 people in attendance, and that's including normal, like when I came in 2014, I went to every single building, met with staff, when we had an opportunity to meet with staff. I had one for parents, I went to town hall, and I went to Bush Street, Bush Street, Bush Lane, Bush Street. And, you know, the average in attendance was probably eight or nine people in each of those groups, and I think the parent one, there was two. I'd have to go back to be more definitive, but it was about 55, 60 people total. However, there were 200 people that participated on the online survey, 296, I believe. The last superintendent search I did, which was in Sandwich, there were 700 people that participated in the online survey. And they didn't even do, they didn't want in-person focus groups, because it was still too close, it was 2021, it was still too close to the 2020 pandemic. So that was a, that was a factor. I'm not ruling them out. I'll never say no if, if you want me to do them, it's just simply a matter of scheduling. Considering the difference in start time, October rather than December, and then according to the RFP, the ability to have someone here for July 1, and you wanting to make that appointment 60 to 90 days before, before that start date. And I understand the reason for that is because people have, if there's, if it's a sitting administrator, they have to give notice to the district that they're leaving, and their contract would specify a specific timeframe. That averages between 60 and 90 days, some are 120 days. But you won't know the specifics of that until you actually offer the job to someone and find out what their individual contract. So we just try to budget, budget that time the best we can. So this, this outline takes us every, through everything from putting the initial brochure together, the announcement of the vacancy, which is all predominantly done online, and in-kind contributions. MASC belongs to three online networks, of which we host or allow them to post vacancies on our website, and they allow us to put vacancies on their website. Many of the, two of those are national publications. But predominantly, when people are looking for superintendencies here in Massachusetts, they look at our website, or they look at the superintendent's website. So that would cover the, the advertising component of that, of which it would be, at this moment, no cost to the district for that. The brochure layout, again, we do that in-house, so again, it would only be if we had to, you know, the ones we have to print to include in the direct mailing. But if you look at our website, they're all in online formats. The application forms are online formats, where people can fill them out online, through like smart forms online. So it really kind of cuts down postage expense for you and everything else, but we do do some, so I'm just making you aware of that. And that cost was inside the quote, the cost proposal. I've noted the two school vacation weeks in my calendar, simply because they're there, and we have to acknowledge them, and we really can't schedule things during those, during those, those two weeks. Hear me?
No, you can't really. That one's on now.
Hello? Okay. So in, in addition to that component of it, I've set up the timeframes where there are certain things that you, as a committee, have to, have to do. The major one being putting together, if you, if, I'm assuming you're using one, because it was in the RFP, a search committee, screening committee, whatever label you want to put on it. The search committee, Mr. Keely was on it last time, but it was, it had some, you know, it had a mix of people, had parents, had teachers, administrators, central office staff. It was about 13, 11, 13? 15, that's right, 15. And they worked really well together. And their job was to take all the applications that come in, all of them, they get them all, all the completed ones, narrow that down to a number to invite people in for preliminary interviews with the search committee, and then their job is to narrow that down to three to five names. And those names would be presented to the school committee. The search committee cannot send more than, cannot send less than three, well, they, they can't send less than two. They can't send one, because that usurps the authority of the school committee as far as hiring goes. But by sending two names, you run the risk of one person withdrawing or accepting an offer somewhere else, and you end up with one. So the committee's kind of left without a point of comparison. It's always nice to be able to choose between a couple of different people. By saying no less than three, meaning the charge to the school committee being no less than three and more than five, more than five is way more cumbersome on you than it needs to be. But three to five allows you to be able to function, get through the time, the timeline for that process effectively and efficiently, efficiently, and then be able to make a decision at the end. So there's a, that's identified in the timeline, when that would have to be done. Now, that membership should be completed by your February 13th school committee meeting, if you're going with the second and fourth Mondays, that's where it would fall. So that I would have an opportunity to work with them. There are certain things I have to do with the search committee by law. I have to train them on the open meeting law, I have to train them on conflict of interest law, and they have to complete the online. If they haven't already done so, they have to complete the online ethics test. And I have to, I have to provide them copies of the open meeting law. What we need to do is find out from your town clerk, is if they have, do they have to go get sworn in? And that, I'm not sure every town, every community is different, so we would verify that, and they, before they could even get information from me, they'd have to complete all those tasks. The idea being, all that training is done before the application deadline, so that they're ready to go as soon as the application deadline occurs. We do it intentionally on a Thursday, is the deadline, so that we have Friday to kind of put everything together and get that information out to the search committee members. They would review it and then come together. March 6th is the date. It's the, it's a Tuesday after your, I think it's a Tuesday after, I think it's Tuesday. And that way, we would be able to have them review all the applications, identify who they want to bring in, and then on the week of March 13th to the 20th, that whole week, they'd be conducting preliminary interviews and then making the final determination as to who to, which candidates to forward to the school committee as recommended finalists. So while this whole beginning part is going on, starting from today through the January 30th date, there's two things that need to, need to accomplish. One is, I provided you a copy of the brochure from 2014. Now, this was state-of-the-art at the time, and of course, my color printer decided to die, so all this was, guess what color? All the shaded area was that green, okay? And it was a trifold, because we mailed them to everybody. I also included a copy of the Sandwich one, which was one of the more recent ones that I've accomplished, and this is designed for online publishing. It ends up being two pages, but it's on eight and a half by 11, because this is typically, if someone's going to print it out, this is what, this is how it would print. And again, they have their colors and logos and pictures and so forth, and we can do all the same thing for Dartmouth as well. But what we need to do is update all the information on it, obviously, on the, on this one, because things aren't the same since 2014. And the other component, using Survey Monkey, we develop an online survey, and it's different than the one we used in 2014, because we've gotten better at it. This one, and again, the, the copy I can show you online has the D in the upper left-hand corner, the branding, you know, the big D that's on your website, and that banner is green, too. But basically, it asks people to self-identify, although they do not have to put names. In fact, there's no place on this where we ask for someone's name. But we ask them to identify as either a parent guardian of a Dartmouth Public Schools student or students, an employee of the Dartmouth Public Schools, a resident of the community without children enrolled in the Dartmouth Schools, a student in Dartmouth Public Schools, or Dartmouth local official or town, or town employee. And then there's always other. And sometimes other is, I'm a parent of a student in Dartmouth Schools and a employee of the Dartmouth Public Schools. So that, that's typically what happens. Or I'm a parent and I'm a school community member, or something like that. Then the second question, and I'll explain why that's important in a minute. The second question is, select the most significant current or future issues that the new superintendent will need to address. And out of this list of things, this five, you pick five, meaning I'm asking people to prioritize what their most important things are here. And that list includes strategic long-range planning, collective bargaining, facilities management, curriculum development, financial management, communication with parents and community, staff relations, professional development, school-based technology, academic standards, student assessment, diversity of staff and student body, of staff evaluation, social emotional well-being of students and staff, school district culture, and district community partnerships, and then there's an other. So out of that list, we ask them to pick the five most important to them, them as individuals. And then we further try to get them to clarify that, with the, with, in question three, it's kind of open-ended. What do you believe is or will be the most important issue facing the next superintendent? Then you go on to the next question. A list of positions that superintendent candidates may have held in the past. Which prior positions do you think would prove most valuable for the next superintendent of Dartmouth Public Schools to possess? And you can check up to three. Again, we're asking them to prioritize. Assistant superintendent in another district, assistant superintendent, human resources director, finance director, business manager, building principal, teacher, curriculum specialist, bleh, curriculum specialist, special education director, leadership position outside of education, or prior experience in education, doesn't matter as long as the candidate has the right skill set. So that's, again, that would be up to three, so we're asking for priorities. And question five, listed, listed below, specific areas of expertise the superintendent candidates may possess, find you, from your perspective, how much weight should the school committee place in each of these areas? And you, you would check critically important, above-average importance, of average importance, below-average importance, or relatively unemployment for the following categories. Budget development management, curriculum development evaluation, goal setting, strategic planning, facilities management and development, human resource management, staff evaluations, public relations, school-based technology and digital learning, data analysis, special education, collective bargaining. So out of each, so the, basically, they could put them all critically important. That's okay, that's what their opinion is and that's why we capture. Um, number six, listed below are specific experiences and skill areas that could be important when evaluating the superintendent candidates. From your perspective, how much weight should the school committee place in each of these areas? Again, critically important all the way down, um, and a list of categories there. And the last question, uh, listed below, personal characteristics that different superintendents uh, could, could possess. And again, the same ranking system, it would be problem solver, visionary, strong communicator, risk taker, collaborative, approachable, empathetic, assertive, goal-oriented, culturally competent, or inclusive. And then the last question is just open-ended, any comment, additional comments you would like to make on this question. And the reason we ask people to identify the category that they're representing is we can then separate it, this out, filter it based on all of the parents, all of the employees, all of the, and find out what the priorities are of each individual group. Because nine times out of ten, there's like four parents for every employee that fill out one of these surveys. And while that might overall skew the total, by breaking it down into subgroups, we find out what the priorities are for each of the subgroups. And that would include students, that would include staff, that would include parents, each of the categories that are listed in the document. And those would be all presented to you and presented to the search committee, say, here's what your stakeholder groups feel are the most important characteristics to look at. So when you sit down that day, when we present you all the applications, what are you looking for when you start looking through them? Well, this is what you're looking for, these are the characteristics, these are the skill sets, these are the past experience, and these are the personal characteristics of what all your stakeholder groups have said are the most important to be successful in Dartmouth. And that's how the survey is used, is it's applied to all the applications. It's like a lens that's applied to the entire thing. Um, it's real important that this starts as soon as possible. So this is, unless you want to make any changes to it, and I'm more than happy to incorporate them, but once I launch it, it's really, it, it's complicated to make changes to it because it skews all the people who might have already completed it because it's now, it's like two different surveys. But I can launch this to, tonight when I go home. Um, it's actually, it's just one click of a button and it's live and I could send the link. Um, I guess I'd be, I would use Doc, Mr. Keely as the, as the liaison because he's the one I've been communicating with, with the RFP. Um, and you could get this up on your website and send it out with all your, um, regular communication methods. The one thing I do ask though is someone reach out to the town and see if it can go out through any communication method the town uses to get to the resident side who may not have children in the school system. Because the more data you collect, uh, the better off the entire process is.
Thank you, Mr. News.
First of all, thank you, Mr. Ky- uh, Mr.
Kylie, Mr. Hardy.
He's over there.
Yeah, Mr. Kylie's over there, Mr. Hardy's over here. Um, we've had the opportunity to work together in the previous, uh, search committee. Uh, with everything that you just brought up, besides the online surveys, anything that you need from this committee tonight? Um, any other, the brochure, do you have some, it looks like we, based on this timeline that you presented, there is a little bit of time for the brochure.
Right.
Anything else that you need from this committee?
Just permission to speak with Mr. Keely and to try to get the, the data necessar-. I, I don't like to go to individuals, members of the staff without the okay to do so. Whether that comes from the superintendent or not.
You're referring to the, um.
Updating the brochure.
Updating the brochure.
Um, and get the data in that so that I can have that brochure ready for you at your, um, at that meeting in January, where you can take a look at it and say, no, let's tweak this, we tweak that, and that way it's ready to go when we want to advertise.
Okay. Uh, besides that, if you don't mind, I have a couple of other questions, Mr. News. Uh, besides that, in, in your experience, what are you seeing right now as, for, for candidate pools? Um, are we seeing multiple searches? Are we seeing, um, school committees going back to the drawing board? Um, how, how has, because I know you've recently launched some, uh, launched some searches, uh, on your website, so I'm just curious, what, what are you seeing? As you know, this is the important, most important decision this committee, the school commit, any school committee makes. So what are you seeing?
Not going to lie to you, it's, it's not great. Um, the, uh, the, the searches that have successfully completed, didn't see the overall numbers, but, um, they had the right person in the pool, they felt. While you may not have thirty-five applicants, you may have twelve or fifteen that, that are good. And that's what the aspect is.
Okay. So smaller pool, still qualified candidates.
There's still, there's still good quality out there. Um, um, the, it's simply a matter really of a match, someone who wants to come to Dartmouth as much as you want them to work here. And that's what worked last time. Um, and, you know, any other search that the superintendent? See, I don't consider a search successful until the superintendent's contract's been renewed at least once. Um, because anybody can kind of fool their way through an interview and get a three-year contract. Not, well, I shouldn't say anybody. Um, but it's, it's not uncommon that that's happened and then there's a quick realization that this was the wrong pick and people part ways. But when you get renewed, that tells me that, that the, the relationship is working between the school committee and the superintendent. The other dramatic change that we've seen, though, that's really kind of, um, more telling on the future is that the turnover on the school committee is even higher than the turnover in the administration. Um, you know, the last couple of years have been brutal on everybody involved. Um, and, uh, they're just in, on everybody involved. I'm not leaving anybody out. Um, and, uh, it's, you know, teachers are retiring at a higher rate. Um, you can't buy, you can't find bus drivers, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of things that were impacted over this last, uh, two-year period. And, um, um, it's, it was not funny, but, um, before my mom passed, my mom's a retired first grade teacher, and, um, but she watched what her, some of her colleagues, some of her friends that are still, were still working during twenty-twenty. And she's, thank God that didn't happen while I was teaching. Um, because, just because of that. And, um, but the, uh, you know, the, the bottom, you, I, I couldn't tell you, I couldn't never guarantee a number to you, Chris.
Sure.
I just couldn't do it.
No, I appreciate your honesty, Jim.
You know, it, it, it's challenging, it's, you know, we, we take extraordinary steps to get the notice out to as many people or many avenues as possible. Um, you know, uh, the administrators could tell you, the mail they get, the emails that they, announcements of vacancies, that sometimes it's like, go away, leave us alone, kind of thing, if I'm happy there. Um, but we have to do it. Because we have to let people know that the vacancy exists. And then, you know, if they, you know, if they pique an interest and they send me an email asking about it, then it's a, we start talking about it, but.
Sure.
Just as, you know, once, once we work on a district and, and bring a superintendent in, we would never actively recruit them away. Never once did I call Dr. Gifford and say, hey, are you ever interested in this other position? Because that's unethical. Um, and I would never do that.
And it's just as much an interview, um, for us as it is for them.
Yeah, it's an important point, it's one I try to stress, stress with search committees, is it's a dual evaluation process. Um, a candidate is sitting there going, I'm fairly successful in where I am and it's, I have a pretty good job, is this a place I want to come? And a lot of it depends on, um, the interaction with the search committee members. Are the search committee members engaging? Are they hostile? Are they, uh, horrible, um, uh, body language communicators? Like they sit the whole time like Mr. News, like this and, and kind of shut down? Or are they, are they more open? You know, they, do they make eye contact? And, yeah, it's kind of a misnomer, people are afraid to make notes during the interviews, like, oh, I can't write anything down, I have to keep eye contact. No. If you just sit there and not write anything down, the candidate's worried. So, yeah, take notes, be engaging, just be personable, be yourselves, so to speak, well, hopefully. And, um, you know, and if it's, if they walk away from that experience, that's a great group. Well, you've made a very positive impression on someone, so when, if in fact, they are a good fit for you, they're excited about the opportunity to come, go into the next step. Um, if it was a horrible experience, um, it's like, you know what, thanks, but no thanks. Uh, there's, they would, they have a lot of options. You know, one challenge was, um, I was doing a superintendent search in Situate, um, in March of two thousand twenty. And we had just started the preliminary interviews and the world came to an end. And we very quickly had to transition from in-person interviews to online platform. And we, it took a while for the, my, both myself as the facilitator and the search committee to get comfortable in that format. And we did a couple of practice runs before we actually brought candidates into it. And it, it was just a whole new, whole new, uh, experience that way. I hope I never have to go back to it.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy.
Thank you. Dr. Jenkins, you good?
No, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Couple of quick questions I have, Jim. Uh, you talked about, uh, if we get the, if we were able to get that brochure and send it to town hall to have them put it on their website, would that work?
Well, just the link to the survey.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Initially, I, I need, I, you know, if I can, I could send Mr. Keely the, the link tonight when I get home, because it's, it's ready to go. Um, and the sooner we can get that out there and talked about, um, each school could put it on their website. Just put a little blop on superintendent search survey, click here, and it brings them to the Survey Monkey, um, the website, which is the host of the survey. Um, I do, I will say that, you know, while, um, while the survey's live, I'm the only person who's going to see it. The people who complete the survey won't be able to see the results like some surveys do, um, because I don't want it to influence any future people. Um, I did make sure I shut off the, the feature where you can only take it once from each computer, because I know there are people who might be at home and they have one computer and there might be four people who want to take the survey. And the same is true, uh, you know, maybe in the schools too, but, um, so. And, yeah, I mean, that sets me up for maybe somebody trying to sit there and fill the survey out forty times and try to skew the results. But on average, it takes about six minutes to complete this survey, so if you've got, you know, four hours to fill it out forty times, go right ahead.
Yeah. Um, I know, uh, one of the things we talked about the last time was the fact that each applicant is a complete separate application.
Yes.
In other words, if I've applied, if someone's applied X, Y, Z place and they, you don't transfer.
They apply to Dartmouth.
Yeah.
They don't apply to MASC, they apply to the Dartmouth Public Schools. So each application is individual to this district.
Okay. And other than that, the only thing I would, when you put it all together is, uh, and having done this numerous times, you see, uh, somebody with a letter of reference from six years ago type of deal I would like, and I don't know how you do it.
The instructions are no more than three years old.
Okay.
Three, there's a reference, no more than three years old, if they can't follow simple instructions on. And the other thing too is we ask them for a personal statement on how they feel their management style would fit, given the information that's included in the brochure about the Dartmouth Public Schools.
Yeah.
And if in the second paragraph it says, I really feel like I'm a good fit for X, Y, Z community and they forgot to change the name, you know, do the search, global search a replace and change the same letter of, uh, personal statement. Again, that's kind of one of those things that you make note of it, you don't automatically discard it, but you make note of it. And, you know, that's what I talk to the search committees about, it's just you make note of something like that and it may or may not influence your decision on whether you want to bring this person in or forward the person to the school committee. But they, they'll see it, you know?
Very good.
I don't edit, the, the only ones I don't send are, like, because we go online, we get a lot of, like, one-page resumes for building superintendents, like, apartment building superintendents or business building superintendents.
Yeah.
Because of the words, you know, the key word search.
Yeah.
Those, I'm not going to waste the search committees, because they didn't fill out the rest of this stuff.
All right. Very good, I'm good. Everybody good?
I'm good.
All right, so.
Great.
All right, so I would like to entertain a motion that we, uh, go about and hire MASC as the, uh, consultant of record for, uh, the new super, the superintendent search.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Oliver?
Second.
Okay, I apologize.
Oh, no, you're good.
Miss, uh, second by, uh, Ms. Wade on the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jim. Much appreciated.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'll be in touch with, uh.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. News.
Whoa, whoa, whoa!
Oh, my goodness.
Something out there tonight, Jim.
Something in the air. Under, under superintendent search, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Are we, are we ready to take up the interim superintendent piece here?
Yes, please.
Perfect, could I, uh, just? Do you like to go first or?
No, go ahead, I'll, I'll let you go, it's all right, never mind.
No problem. So, you know, I had some more opportunity to, to think about what I brought up at the, uh, at the last, one of the last meetings, if it wasn't the last one, the meeting before. Um, I also had, I also had a couple of, um, emails from, from district staff members that, that supported, um, my recommendation of, um, Mr. Kylie as interim superintendent, uh, through June thirtieth. And for all the reasons that I, I previously stated at my meeting, someone that is clearly vested in this district, someone who knows, um, our staff, knows how we operate. And, you know, I'm, I'm starting to come to the realization and concern for that matter that I don't know if, um, this, uh, if our bargaining unit contracts will be ratified before, uh, Dr. Gifford leaves. Um, so I think it's very important for consistency purposes to, that we have, uh, Mr. Kylie in that role. And he's just respected, um, all around, all around respected. And with that, I will, I will make a motion that we appoint Mr. James Kylie, interim superintendent of Dartmouth Public Schools, effective March first, two thousand twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Okay. Excuse me. We have a motion by Mr. Oliver, a second by Ms. Wade, to appoint Mr. Kylie, who is our assistant superintendent of budget and finances, interim superintendent, March first, two thousand twenty-three through June thirtieth. On the motion, Dr. Jenkins.
So I'm in support of the motion, I just want to be clear about this, this is not about the content of the motion, it's more about the process. Um, and I'm just a little bit concerned because we posted superintendent search on our agenda. We didn't really post that we were talking about the interim, uh, the interim superintendent appointment. Um, and I, I do like to be a little bit of a stickler about that because I do want people to be able to comment on that. Um, I'll also note that Ms. Amaral is not here, um, and I would like for her to be able to have public input. Um, I'm okay if the rest of the committee wants to vote on that tonight, I do intend to vote in favor of this. I just want to be respectful about open meeting law and the process.
One of the things that we had talked about at the, thank you, Dr. Jenkins, I understand where you're coming from. One of the things we had talked about at our last meeting was talking about an interim superintendent. So that it has been on the table the past couple of meetings and I did state it was, you know, we were going to have, you know, continue that discussion tonight. I'd like to look at Mr. Kylie and get his.
Look at you.
His, his, his comment, his thoughts. If you want to wait till January, personally, we're good with, I think, no disrespect, Chris.
No, no disrespect.
And understanding, understanding what Shannon's saying, type of deal.
So I, I just.
So I just say, obviously, in terms of the particulars of whether it's on the agenda or not, it doesn't matter to me. If it's postponed, that's fine. I can understand that. I can just say that, you know, it's an honor to be considered. And like I said at the last meeting, I'd be happy to help in any way I can. I will say that it's not going to be an easy task for four months to do two jobs. So, you know, that's, that's, it's going to be a big balancing act for sure. And I just want to make sure that, you know, the committee understands that, that, you know, it is two full-time jobs. So it would be something that I would consider in terms of trying to hold down the fort for four months and make it a good transition to the new superintendent. I think, you know, what we have going for us is a very good group of individuals in our, in our building that Dr. Gifford's, you know, been working with. And so, I mean, it wouldn't be a one-person thing. And I have talked, because you brought it up, I have talked to some other people in our office and I know that they would, you know, assist and support through that process. So, you know, that makes me feel more confident certainly in trying to do both tasks. But at any rate, whatever you decide in terms of the formality of it is fine by me. We have until March, so.
Leave my committee how you want to handle it. I'm good either way.
I am, you know, my only, continuing with the discussion, my only thing, concern would be is, you know, I know we're getting, the next meeting isn't until after the first of the year. So as long as the committee's okay with that, I appreciate Dr. Jenkins', you know, comments on procedures. So I could withdraw, I'm happy to withdraw the motion or just move forward with it.
I'm good either way.
I am as well. I mean, I understand.
I mean, if you want to wait for, and again, I totally understand.
I would personally like to wrap it up tonight and I think for everyone's, for everyone's sake.
Yeah, that's fine.
I do appreciate the comments though.
All right. So we have a motion. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Kylie.
Thank you, Mr. Kylie.
Okay. That takes care of that. Okay. Moving on. MCAS. There's Katie.
Ms. Paveo and Mr. Tebow.
We'll be presenting that. I just couldn't see them back there. I thought maybe they left.
So I don't know if we should congratulate Mr. Kylie or not. Congratulations to Mr. Kylie. I just want to, we want to thank Dr. Gifford and the school committee and members of the community and all of the educators of the Dartmouth Public School. Tonight's presentation really reflects the hard work of so many individuals, our students, but certainly our dedicated educators as well. And so we want to make sure that we, you know, thank them for their efforts because as we've seen from or heard from a number of speakers tonight already, COVID-19 has really upended our profession over the last two and a half years. And I think tonight's presentation kind of speaks to that. So we want to make sure that we give credit and thank those folks who are on the front lines each and every day and doing great work with our kids. So we thought we'd just real quickly talk briefly about what MCAS is and why it's important. And so as, you know, we all know, the Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System, MCAS is a standardized assessment administered annually in English-language OTS in grades three through eight and then again in grade 10. Mathematics in grades three through eight and then again in grade 10. And science in grades five, eight, and then 10. And so it seeks to assess whether or not our students are exceeding, meeting, partially meeting, or not meeting standards in each of those content areas according to the mass curriculum frameworks.
And why is MCAS important? Well, it provides the school community with some feedback on how well our students are progressing as compared to other students in the Commonwealth. It's also used as part of the accountability system for determining how well a school in a district is performing. And I will stop here though for just a moment and reiterate that MCAS, while it is important for the reasons just mentioned, is only one point of data and therefore should not be viewed as an end-all and be-all. And that's something that we've always appreciated acknowledgement of from this committee. We know that much, we get a much more complete picture of student growth in real time from regularly administered benchmark assessments as well as formative and summative assessment data that's collected in our classrooms throughout the year. What MCAS does do is it provides our families, our schools, and the community a snapshot from a moment in time on how our students, our schools, and our district are doing at that moment. As Mr. Tebow likes to say, MCAS has never cured cancer. It will not put a man on the moon. And most importantly, we know that it does not help ensure that we've developed good human beings. But what it does do is it provides us one vital sign, one piece of data that can be used to see a larger picture. And to that end, not to be lost is that final bullet on this slide, which reminds us that at the high school level, our students do need to pass the MCAS in order to earn a high school diploma.
And so just in thinking about tonight's, the trends that we're going to talk about tonight statewide as well as here in Dartmouth, we thought it would be important to really take us back to the timeline because MCAS has shifted over the past several years. So we'll go back to when things were normal, back in 2019, before COVID. Prior to last year, that was the last time a full MCAS was administered to all grade levels. That was our last normal, if you will, whatever normal is. But that was our last normal school year. And then in 2020, as we all know, you know, March 13th, 2020, schools got shuttered across the state. There was no MCAS at all. If it wasn't for the pandemic, I'm sure folks would have been happy with no MCAS. But, you know, the pandemic is really quite disruptive. In 2021, as we got back into the swing of things, half of the MCAS was administered, meaning shortened test, right? Shortened exam was administered in grades three through eight. Again, our high school students were held to a full administration of MCAS. But again, I think it's important to note that during that school year, you know, at the high school level alone, there were six transitions, six different variations of the schedule between fully remote, hybrid learning, in-person cohorts of kids, some kids coming every day. So it was extremely disruptive and I think that that's important to know. And then last year, finally, full MCAS was administered to all grades. And also for our science students at the high school level, it was the first administration of the Next Generation MCAS assessment for biology. So with that note, the state is using the results from 2022 as kind of our new baseline for moving forward.
So before getting into looking at our performance at the district level, we're first going to look at some trends from across the Commonwealth. MCAS trends across the state mirror what's been reported across the nation. COVID-19 most definitely had a negative impact on student learning despite, and I think this is the really important part, despite the heroic efforts of educators from across the country. In fact, without that effort and without those educators, especially here in Dartmouth, I think that the data that we are about to look at would have been even more drastically impacted. So across the state, in ELA, our scores across the board declined from 2021. Writing scores were lower than last year in grades three through eight. And the steepest declines occurred in grades three through five, which really just reiterates and emphasizes to us that the challenges occurred in early literacy. So our littlest learners who went home and experienced learning in a completely different way were absolutely impacted. In math and science, the data across the state is a little more encouraging. Scores actually improved across the state in the area of mathematics compared to 2021. The percentage of students in grades three through eight who were scoring in a meeting or the exceeding category actually increased by six percentage points. Grade 10 did decline by 2%, which was the smallest decline in the first year of the pandemic. In science, again, scores improved since the 2021 administration of the test. Then the percentage of students in grades five and eight scoring in that meeting or exceeding category increased by 1%. And as Mr. Tebow alluded to, 2022 marked the first year of our high school students were taking the Next Generation exam in the area of biology. And so another reason that we lead with statewide trends is because the data in isolation when we're just looking at our town really holds less meaning. So when you're looking at our trends in Dartmouth, we look at in the ELA, 48% of our students in grades three through eight were meeting or exceeding the standards. And that was seven percentage points above the mean for the state. It is a 5% decline from 2021, which we said across the state, the ELA scores declined in grades three through eight. But it was a slightly smaller regression than the state. In our high schools, 67% of our grade 10 students are meeting or exceeding the standards. Again, that's nine percentage points higher than the state. And the regression really was identical to the state trend for grade 10. Shifting over to mathematics, we had 53% of our students meeting or exceeding the standards in grades three through eight, which is 14 percentage points above the state. And it was a 12% increase from 2021. So we outpaced the state in our increase by 6%, which is a lovely statistic to share. 57% of our grade 10 students were meeting or exceeding the standard, which again is seven percentage points above the state. It is a 3% decline from 2021, but that is only a 1% difference between the state differential. And in the area of science, we had 43% of our students meeting or exceeding the standards in grades five and eight. Again, 1% above the state. That's no change from 2021 at the state and district level. And 57% of our students taking the high school biology MCAS were meeting or exceeding. And that is 10 percentage points higher than the state.
And again, in the first administration of the Next Generation Science MCAS. So we've provided kind of trends in the state and here at Dartmouth. But we thought it would be interesting and, you know, important to kind of consider, how are we performing comparable to like school districts? So the Department of Education in Massachusetts provides a tool known as the DART tool, which is the district accountability. And I'm sorry, it's, want to get it right. I'm sorry. It's the District Analysis Review Tool, DART. I know we use acronyms in this profession and I don't want to confuse anyone. So DART, what DART does is it compares Dartmouth to 10 other districts that are similar in terms of its student enrollment data. So similar percentages of students with disabilities, similar percentages of students who are experiencing economic disadvantage and so on, similar ELL population, for example. And so this chart here shows Dartmouth's performance for grades three through eight in terms of meeting or exceeding standards, which Mrs. Paveo just spoke to. Grade 10, grade five and eight for science. And then it also shows the student growth percentile. And at the bottom of the chart, you can see the mean as well as the median for all of the districts that are considered like districts. You can see that Dartmouth, you know, performs quite favorably when compared to similar districts in a number of the areas. So we thought we would speak to some of those to, again, honor the work that our educators are doing with our students and as well to honor our students' performance.
So looking back at that grades three through eight, ELA and math data when compared to our DART schools, only in ELA, we were only outperformed by East Long Meadow. And again, our very strong performance in math is really shown here, outperforming all of our DART schools and that percentage of students who are meeting and exceeding the expectation. And Mr. Tebow alluded to our growth percentiles. So I think it's really important also to highlight that our growth in comparison to these other schools looks good. You remember that growth, looks at students who score similarly on past exams and how they perform with other peers who have scored similarly in a past test. So I think for people who don't live in Nerdville like I do and love numbers like I do, it's hard sometimes to think about our kids declining but still growing. And when we talk about the student growth percentage, we're saying, I'm comparing how kids who performed, let's just for round numbers, say around an area of 500 on the MCAS last year, did this year. And so while they may have declined, your growth percentage can still be higher if you declined at a slower rate or at a lesser rate. So when we look at growth, growth is really a basket where we put a lot of our eggs because we want to know how our children are performing compared to those who performed similarly to them in past administrations of the exam. So when we look at our growth data in ELA and in math, again, remember that expected growth is 40 to 60th percentile. So we're looking at a 52 percentile in ELA, a 58 growth percentile in math. So we're on the upper end of that typical growth scale, which is encouraging as we move forward.
So for grades five and eight, in terms of science, meeting or exceeding the standards, you can see from this, from this graph here, Dartmouth's performance is right. It's more in line with the median performance of similar districts. So we're right in kind of the middle of the pack. And again, grade 10 was not included by the state in this comparison, I believe, because it was the first year. It was baseline data, so that's why they didn't include the grade 10. But as Mrs. Paveo and I kind of looked at these numbers, Mrs. Paveo talked to the importance of looking at the elementary level, how are we prioritizing science? You know, we know that, you know, unfortunately, when we have to provide intervention to students at the younger levels, oftentimes, science and social studies are the areas that we pull for some of those interventions to take place. You know, so just kind of having an ongoing conversation about how can we tweak that? Because we want to make sure that our students are getting the interventions that they need, but we also want to make sure they're getting good quality tier-one instruction in all areas, including science and social studies. In terms of our grade 10 ELA and math meeting and exceeding standards, again, compared to other like districts, you can see Dartmouth's performance is extremely strong. That 67% meeting or exceeding standards for ELA, for example, while slightly, a slight decline overall, you can still see that in those 10 districts, we are still performing at the top of those like districts. For math, again, 57% puts us second in that, in those 10 like districts. So that's, again, we think, strong performance by our students and our teachers and, you know, should be honored. An area where we want to take a closer look at and kind of dig deeper into the data and ask some challenging questions in terms of why is around our SGP for English and math at grade 10? Because it is, you know, lower than what we would hope for. It's in, in both cases, it's in the middle to high 30s. And as Mrs. Paveo alluded to, you know, typical growth should be between 40 and 60, right? So we're just outside of that typical growth window. And we do want to make sure that, you know, not only are our students achieving, but they're growing at or, either at or higher than like students from other districts as well. That's certainly an area we want to kind of dig in on. So part of our presentation tonight is to really think about learning loss and think about, you know, how COVID has impacted us and quite frankly, what do we, what have we been doing about it? And what are we planning to do about it? And so we'll just start with kind of where we've, what we've already done. And when I say we, I mean all of the educators in Dartmouth. You know, especially, none of this work could take place without, you know, all of our teachers and the educators. But, you know, it started with last year, streamlining our school improvement plans and that work and really adopting that accelerated roadmap that the state had promoted. And so at the elementary level, what that looked like was creating, and the other thing I should note is that these strategies we're talking about might sound familiar because they were highlighted by the building principals two weeks ago or a few weeks ago when they presented their school improvement plans and talked about last year's highlights. That's where these strategies are coming directly from. So lots of uninterrupted tier-one instructional time at the elementary level in particular, with designated time for intervention for ELA and mathematics. At the secondary level, really focusing on implementing blended, personalized, and project-based learning as core instructional strategies, leveraging existing structures like at the high school pace to provide intervention. Those are all parts of, and parcel of the strategy to kind of accelerate learning and to recover some of that learning loss. Strategic leveraging of grant funds is an important note here as well. The state has provided significant additional support to districts. Dartmouth applied for and received several acceleration academy grants, again, staffed by teachers during things like vacation week and during the summer as well. But where we think these academic, these acceleration academies really impacted, MCAS for example, would have been during February and April vacation of last year, where we ran mathematics acceleration academies as well as in the summertime literacy one. But we served, you know, 93 students, I believe it was, during the But we served, you know, ninety-three students, I believe it was, during the first mathematics acceleration academy in February of last year. We served another sixty-three during April vacation. We served seventy-one students at another one of the acceleration academies. So significant numbers of students were able to take advantage of additional intervention through those acceleration academies. We've also, though, you know, we, we think it's important to highlight that this is not just about preparing for a test, though, right? It's about really building a school system that encourages a sense of belonging. And so we've used grant funds for that, towards that end as well, with the creation of the after-school programming at Dartmouth Middle School to help create that sense of belonging. We've also continued to kind of grow and expand after-school activities here at the high school. And I want to kind of give a shout out to one of them, our esports team that started about two, two and a half years ago now, just this past weekend competed at Gillette Stadium, I'm sorry, Helix at the Patriot Place in the finals. And so examples like that, where we can continue to provide plug-in points for our students and create that sense of belonging, when they feel committed to a school system beyond just the traditional day, they're more engaged and they're more successful academically. So we see that really as part of what we're doing to address learning loss as well. And then finally, focused on monitoring for understanding, the use of pre- and post-assessment data to monitor and inform instruction, as well as the use of a variety of data sources to provide scaffolding and just-in-time supports. And again, leveraging existing structures like the PACE period here at the high school to provide intervention and support as necessary. So what are our next steps?
So tonight, we're really talking about a high-level thirty-thousand-foot view of our district's performance on last year's MCAS. But we always want to dig deeper into the data because it's where the impact occurs, where the impact occurs, as we all know, is in the classroom level. And it's between the teachers and the students. And so we continue to review student results on all of our assessments by subgroup. This work is important as it takes into account the issues of equity in education. Are all of our students performing similarly, or do we have subgroups that are not performing as well as the student subgroups? And if so, what are we going to do about it? Our mission statement is about equality education for all, and this step of examining the data when it's broken out by subgroup is important to us because keeps that promise to all students. So we've talked about the aggregate, all of our data tonight is our aggregate, but when we really dive deep, deeply into the data, we need to really make sure that we're not leaving anyone behind, right? So when we talk about that quality learning for all, just that that all means all, in that it doesn't matter how small this group, we make sure that our kids have what they need to be successful. And we're going to continue to monitor for understanding. So I talked a little bit about those foundational literacy skills that our kids, we know our kids lost out on. So we're continuing to try to make sure that we are putting evidence-based curriculum materials into the K to two classrooms to address phonemic awareness. That's been done across all schools. Our L three teacher team is piloting the foundations program to address direct phonics instruction, which is another area that our data tells us we need to work on. We're working with our coaches to identify the gaps and the changes that need to be made in our tier-one curriculum. You know, if we have a large portion of our kids who are not meeting or exceeding the standards, we always say like, that's a tier-one problem because our tier-one, our tier-one program really should be reaching, you know, eighty percent of our kids if we're, if we're maximizing it and getting out of it what we need to. In July of two thousand and twenty-three, the Massachusetts Dyslexia Guidelines become law. They are no longer just a suggestion, they are a law. The good news on that is that we are already meeting the requirements of screening of our students in K to three. And it's really the first step in the larger multi-tiered system of support. You'll hear MTSS mentioned a lot throughout that guideline. And that's where we're talking about identifying and preventing struggles with, with reading in our, our youngest learners. So it's the catch them early, not responding, but rather being proactive and really trying to identify those students early and get in there as fast as we can to clean up some of those gaps. And it just, you know, the, obviously, that the point of data analysis, if you're not someone who just loves a spreadsheet like me, really is to identify trends and to inform and adjust our instruction so that we can give our munchkins what they need.
With that, we're happy to answer any questions.
I know we threw a lot of numbers at you.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Oliver.
I want to go first. I have my own first spot, so feel free.
No, I was just going to say, thank you. And also, like, in addition, I do want to say that this is, you know, we have so many of our staff here tonight, and I do think it's really important to say that this is a testimony to their hard work and dedication to our kids. So, you know, there's, there's been a lot of hardship over the last few years and teachers keeping that, everything going in the classroom and, and being really creative. And, you know, the fact that our students are continuing to grow and grow in different ways, you know, and they, our students have been flexible, our staff have been incredibly flexible. So I think we all, as a community, I mean, part of this is, community hearing this too, is that we're really lucky with the staff we have and the kids we have, so that's all.
So yeah, thank you again. This is really good data. The only thing, maybe DART doesn't do this, but I would love to see him a little bit of a broken record on this, per pupil spending in that table to comparison districts, because again, is a little bit of a broken record. We're in the bottom ten percent of the Commonwealth in terms of per pupil spending. And so we do a lot with a little here in this district. And so I would, I would expect that a lot of those districts that are getting similar or not as good results from us are spending more, a lot more money than we are. And I think it's important for us as a school committee to continue to reinforce, we get really good returns on what we invest, and we should be investing more in our kids and our staff.
First of all, thank you. I appreciate the data, I appreciate the presentation. With that being said, we spoke a lot about learning loss, a lot about the acceleration academies, and, you know, I'm not sure where the district is. I am on the budget subcommittee, so I kind of have an idea. But are we, is the hope of the school department to continue to offer some of these learning loss programs? We are, I'm well aware that ESRS is coming to a close pretty soon, we're hitting that financial cliff. So has there been any discussion in, in the, in the district around these types of learning loss programs continuing?
So just to the acceleration academy, I will say that it's been a very historically quick turnaround, that we don't find out about them. The August one that we ran, we didn't find out about until the second week of July. So my, my supposition would be after the first of the year, we may hear about some of those grant opportunities for, for like the, for the vacation acceleration academies, which we have run the last year.
And if I could, I mean, speculation on my part, but when we saw the commissioner speak at the Mas, Mas conference, one of the strategies he did tout was the acceleration academies. So I'm hopeful that the state will continue to provide those grant opportunities. You know, it does provide for a pretty intense intervention for our students. And again, we're fortunate to have staff who step up because it's during their vacation weeks as well.
Absolutely.
And so we're fortunate for that, for sure.
I think the other thing to keep in mind is that we are very fortunate that we have instructional specialists at our levels who do provide some of that intervention work, and that that's not necessarily something that you see in other districts where you have interventionists who are, who really dedicated to providing that intervention. It's, we have separate coaches. A lot of the districts that Ross and I collaborate with, one person holds a dual role in that, in that regard. But we do have interventionists who are providing some of that work for our kids, especially at the elementary level, and I think we're, we're very fortunate to have that.
Agreed. No, absolutely. One last just point, as far as the MCAS scores go, you know, I have, I have no concerns about what, what Dartmouth posted this year. You know, once again, testament to, to all the staff. With that, I know that the state has coming out with new MCAS graduation, graduation requirements for the MCAS. Could we just, could the committee just hear, and maybe this is more of a question for Dr. Gifford, when do those take effect? Is my understanding that it's not going to be for several more years? So I, I just want to, I just want to hear that.
That's my understanding, too, is that it's a, it's a couple of years away.
Is there a date set in stone yet?
There's a bull out plan.
I'm against it, I will say that.
Right, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, please don't quote me, I'll have to look it up, but it's, it's in one of those years, I believe.
It's disheartening that the state decided to go this way at this point in, at this point in time, but I.
Yeah, and I think it highlights the importance of staying on and, you know, staying on and in an acceleration kind of mindset and continuing, to your point, to look at leveraging funds to provide these interventions because they're going to be necessary. Because just getting back to where they, where we were in two thousand and nineteen is not going to be good enough. You know, and again, while I'm not a huge proponent of MCAS, it is a requirement, particularly at the high school level, to earn your high school diploma. And so if for no other reason than that, we owe it to our students to make sure we put them in a position to be successful.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the, the.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Takes care of that. All right, new business.
Sure, so I guess Mr. Shea just wants to give us a brief overview of some of the changes they're making to the program of studies at the high school.
Will be very quick, I understand. We've got some music shows going on tonight and.
All kinds of things.
A lot of stuff.
First of all, I want to introduce Ms. Bridgette Silva. She's our director of guidance. She's done all the yeoman's work on all of this. She's met with all the lead teachers. She really has been the face of this, so as much as I'm going to talk a lot more, Bridgette's done a lot of the hard work. We came to you today because we wanted to just talk about some changes that we're doing, and we want to just inform you as well as the community and keep people up to date about our thought process and what we're still doing at Dartmouth High School. And some of it is to help support the MCAS learning loss, some of it is just to help that student experience and help our students make decisions that are proper. That's not what I want to do. Rob told me this was going to be easy.
Let me see if I see it. Is it up top? I see green, oh, you got it? Yeah.
We might have to go from this side. Can we go from here? Y'all see it?
Here we are.
All right. So we're just updating our program of studies this year. We've done a lot of work behind the scenes. We met with all the stakeholders. Like I said, Mr. Silva met with each lead teacher. They put together their class offerings, they met with their departments and their CPTs and really discussed it. So it's kind of been like a trickle-up effect almost, where the teachers and the CPTs met, and then we met with the department heads and went from there. And a lot of the feedback was on where we, what classes we're offering and how we're offering classes and the number of classes we're offering, talking about some of that, balancing out those thirty classes to like those twelve classes and help balancing that out to make that a optimal learning environment for all of our students. As you can see, this is, this is, we're going to be changing our credit requirements for graduation. You can see on the FAR credit, that's our current one, and I'm going to examine, I'm going to bring it bigger for you to see the major changes we had. But with the development of our BIT department, that was kind of one of the, like, the first steps to make these changes. So the real changes come in three areas. Our Unified Arts are going to go from a half, one, from a half credit, one credit to one and a half credits. We're increasing it. All of this will be from the class of twenty-seven and above, so our current eighth graders, so we are rising freshmen and above. So we'll be working on two credits for the next four years, really, or three years, as we introduce all of our students. We had a computer science credit with the Innovation and Business Technology Department. We actually added another half a credit into that as well. So it's a one and a half credit in Business Innovation and Technology, and one and a half credits of Unified Arts for a total of one additional required credits for our students. So if we go back to here, you'll see our minimum credit requirement is twenty-four credits across the board. We want to help structure some of the choices that our students make and see the wonderful offerings that we have at Dartmouth High School, and especially in like our areas of Unified Arts. And I use the example we talked last week, month, about if I want to go into Beaufort-Volk and take a photography class, I'm paying a lot of money now. And we have, we have a photography studio here, that's pretty impressive. So we want to help our, structure our decisions that we made with our students. The basis was, we met with the stakeholders, we updated significant language in the program, too. We wanted to use a common language. That's some of the things that we're trying to do in our schedule and in our program of studies for everyone. We really want to spotlight all that we have to offer, and we want to help understand the, the progressions through high school. One of the things that we're going to talk about in our next, the steps is, our students' course of study plans is really where we want to help our students understand how to navigate high school a little bit more supported. The basis of the decisions, we're focusing on our students' needs, focus on the students' emotional academic health. Again, some of that Unified Arts can really help in our students across the board as well. We want to emphasize how our students think critically and the choices they make, and we use Mas Core as a foundation. So that was where we started from, so most of those requirements are straight from Mas Core as well, because that's where, what the state is telling us they want us to use. To, for sake of time, those are just our program of studies that we offer and what the course trajectory students can take in, in all of the classes that we offer. But what else do we have to offer at Dartmouth High School? We have twenty-six AP classes, we're adding two additional AP classes next year, AP Music Theory and AP Pre-Calc. Our SEALAB illiteracy and our AP capstones are some things that we take a real pride in. We are actually celebrating both our John and Abigail Adams Scholars and our SEALAB illiteracies on Friday. And that's what, a hundred and?
Seventy students.
So I keep getting the number wrong. Every time we met, I changed the number. It's seventy, it's seventy students that have achieved those honors, so we're really excited about it. What's helped me through this year is our partnerships with MasQ, Mas Insight, and Project Lead the Way. They've been a really strong partner of us, and we've been, all of those have really helped us through this. The redesigned BIT department is with that computer science pathway and really focusing in that language. Side note, I didn't realize it until way too late, but I love that it's like our, it's our computer base and it's called BIT, and it took me a little while to realize that, but that's okay. And then our science department has really started to focus the conversation on sustainability and what does that look like and how are we going to continue with that? So the next steps that we're going to do with this is our guidance department, and we have a really strong partnership with the middle schools, we talked a few times. So our guys, our whole guidance department is going to go down and meet with the eighth grade students, go over the course, course catalog with them and really help structure their choices that they make. And then the other part of it is, is our guidance counselors are really going to work with our students on their own plan of study. Every student will be working on, off of their own plan of study, what their plans are. Now, they're, they're a living, breathing document, and that's the beauty thing about Google Docs, is that they can grow and they can change. And I know who I was as a freshman was different than I was as a senior, but we're giving them a, we're giving them a path and some answers to what do I do next and how do I do that next? And if I want to get here, how do I get there? We're going to use our advisory, of course, to help promote that, the course offerings, and we're going to encourage students to take classes outside their comfort zone. I think one of the things that I truly regret is I never learned of like my, my artistic side of myself until way too late in life. And I think we want students to step outside of that comfort zone and really see what every, what courses have to offer and maybe help some students find different career paths that they never thought they would find. Like I said, I didn't want to take too much of your time, but we did want to update you all on what we're doing and why we're doing it. So if people ask you why, or you hear why, we wanted to keep you all in the loop of like the changes that were made. They're not massive, significant, but they're enough that we felt it was really important to inform you as a committee and the community in general. So we'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Shea, thank you, Bridgette. Dr. Jenkins?
Oh, I get to go first this time. So this is, I, this is great. I don't have any objections to the changes that you're making. I just want to say, having, you know, had two kids recently go through this and also working in higher ed, you know, I found when I was working with my kids, the program of study was sort of my main entry as a parent to understanding the curriculum. And one of the things I would like to see us maybe to think about, not for now, but moving forward to, to more clearly communicate that these are the graduation requirements, but in many instances, the expectations for institutions of higher education are more than that, right? And talking about getting kids out of their comfort zone. Well, I've done my three sciences, I'm done, I'm good, right? Well, yes, but good schools are going to be looking for four years of science, right? I've done my two years of young, yes, but, right? And so I'd like to see some of those expectations about that pathway maybe put into the program of studies because I knew that because I work in this industry, but I feel like there's a lot of parents who might not realize that and only see, okay, check, you've met that and say, not maybe push their kids to do some things that are outside their comfort zone. So I just, that's something to think about, but otherwise, I think, I think it looks great.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Mr. Oliver?
Yeah, thank you both for your presentation. Thank you for all the hard work that you've done on, you know, putting this together and, and playing, working behind the scenes. I'm just thrilled, I'm happy to hear, happy to see the communication, just being open, transparent with the committee, what's happening, the steps that are taking place. So yeah, I have, I have no other questions, so thank you both.
Thank you.
Mary?
Just the same, I think, you know, this is excellent. I also like the fact that marching band is actually going to count as a, you know, as a credit for, you know.
I'm going to be careful with that, that. There's rumors out there, I want to be very clear.
I was just looking on here.
Yeah. So marching band, there is a law in Massachusetts that there are some things that can count and replace a PE. We're only doing that for students as a last option, and we're telling, right now, we think it would affect only three students in our building. It's usually a student that is traditionally, might have academic support and banned, that really crams their schedule. That really crams their schedule. So we're talking about, right now, it's three students in the entire building that might even impact that. Um, and, and, and we're doing that for the sake of that. I, I believe in PE. I was, I wish I was a PE teacher and I think it's really important. And again, on the mental health side of things, I think it's a really great outlet for a lot of our students. So we want to be really careful with that. So when we say this and we've, we've communicated this to our Guidance Councilors who are doing the career path with our students is that this is not an option for every student. This is a last resort, and like I said, we're talking three students at Dartmouth High that this would impact this year.
Okay. I appreciate that clarification. Now, I know it is tough for those kids just to find, and for many of our kids to find room in their schedule for some of their electives, but sometimes where, you know, I feel for them, you know?
Yes.
It is just, I mean, again, they have a huge sacrifice and I'm like happy to do that. And then again, I val- certainly value you as well.
Absolutely. No, and I'm glad for the clarification on that as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Because this is not a, this is an option where we're going to have, like, it will be approved by admin, like, for this.
This is, yeah, yeah.
So it, it, you can talk about it, but the admin has to say, like, nope, we're going to fit into your schedule and go from there.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for, for everything. Good question that I have, uh, on the courses, you know, when you went back and you had, you didn't, you get a glance over, which is fine, but, you know, when I look, I look at it, I look, you know, for discussion purposes, English, and it's in all of them. It says CCR honors. What is CCR?
Yep, College and Career Readiness.
Okay.
Yep, so the, the three, I don't want to use the word levels, but the three, the three we can, a student has to take is a CCR class, which is College and Career Ready, recognized by universities, as preparing for college honors, then AP.
God bless acronyms.
Yep. Exactly.
Yeah, oh, I still haven't learned them after all these years, so. No, I, I appreciate that, and again, I think, I agree with my colleagues. I think the, uh, the communication down, you know, with the eighth grade is, and over the next couple of years is going to be key for everything, but thank you very much for all of this.
And just to jump on something Dr. Jenkins said, like, even here, it says two years for foreign language. We encourage three at the minimum. Like, you know, we talk about getting into that pool. Yeah, it gets you into the pool. What makes you stand out in that pool?
Yeah, I'd just like to see it, I think, you know, as a parent, we're not part of those conversations with guidance or whatever, and, you know, I have two boys, they're not always best about communicating what conversations they have.
High school boys, never.
So writing it down somewhere, you know, for parents to see as part of that communication effort might be great.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We don't need to vote on that, do we?
No.
Okay. No, I know that, yeah. Okay. Next on the agenda is, uh, school choice vote and discussion. Turn it over to Mr. Kylie.
Thank you, Mr. Dunoot. So I provided, um, a sort of financial summary of what, um, the school choice program has meant to us from a funding perspective. Um, I, I think, you know, the future with federal funding, um, being uncertain moving forward, you know, the school choice funds offer a potential, um, way to buffer some of the, some of the reductions that might be ahead, so certainly hopeful that that's the case. Um, we've focused on a number of things through the years. It's, it's, uh, the biggest item that school choice, um, has funded through the years has been technology. So it was originally our primary source of funding for our one-to-one initiatives. Thank goodness we did that because it, it, it allowed us to get ahead of, of, of things and allowed us to transition when we did have the disastrous pandemic to sort of support, support kids as best we could with remote learning. Uh, and without that funding, I, I don't, I don't know what that would have looked like, but it certainly wouldn't have been nearly as successful as it was. We also fund stipend amounts for programs that we likely would not otherwise be able to fit into the budget to support the music program, after-school programs, strength and conditioning programs. It's been a major source of support for teacher develop, professional development. And we've also used it for instructional materials and capital improvement projects like the Dartmouth Memorial Stadium Project. Several years ago, I set up the preschool classroom over at the Potter School, the Innovation Lab right here, and the improvements that are to come in this room right here with the, with the Library and Media Center overhaul that we're going to do. So it's, it's been valuable. Right now, we're projecting approximately $685,000 of revenue this year, so significant amount of money. Our projected expenditures are about $386,000 for this year, so we'll, we'll bank a little bit of, a little bit of savings there that can be used in the future, so. That's, um, sort of a, a summary of what we've used it for. I'd be happy to answer any more specific questions.
Questions? Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Kylie. So I'm thrilled that we're, you know, we're at a, a point in which we have school choice in Dartmouth, especially with uncertain times. I think the money that we've spent, um, you know, for the most part are all one-time, one-time expenses, with the exception of a couple of the, I don't know about the strength and conditioning program, that's been reoccurring or not. Um, I, I would just add that I would be very cautious, you know, as far as using, and I know, I think the, the committee set some kind of limit as far as what you can spend before coming to the committee, about.
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand. That's what I thought. Uh, that's what I thought it was as far as using this for anything other than, you know, one-time costs that we, you know, you're certainly very, very cautious moving forward during these times. So I would just ask, you know, I think this is great. I think we should continue it. It certainly fills, um, fills a need in this district. I wish our budgets, I wish we were funded at a proper level, but this certainly gives us the flexibility to offer some of these programs and, and some of these devices such as the Chromebook, so, thank you.
Dr. Jenkins?
Yeah, you know, I would agree with Mr. Oliver. I think our policy has been good so far to, to not use these potentially non-recurring revenues, right, to fund recurring costs, but, you know, quite frankly, if things don't change, I think we're going to have to revisit that to help ease us off the cliff. Um, you know, I don't want to, I don't like to do that. I'm reluctant to do that, but, I mean, if the choice is to fall off the cliff or to use this to help us, um, ease our way through that, I think, I think we will have to revisit that in the future.
Agreed. Mary?
Um, no, I didn't, you know, I can't say that I have anything, you know, else really that I had, or something I feel like we need to continue, just, um, for fiscal reasons. I guess I did have one question more if we look at just the towns, the ascending towns. Are we seeing now that Westport's, um, built a new high school, do we see any change in their numbers coming in, or is that?
Been about consistent, the number of applications we get.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Yeah, I, uh, and, and again, I'll be a broken record, but I'm the one, I won't, no disrespect to my colleagues, it's fundamental for me. I don't vote for school choice. I don't, I like the money, don't get me wrong, but I'm just not one, and I did that rant a number of years ago, so I won't do it again. But, uh, you know, I, I think this is, this is great and, yeah, I, I agree that, uh, federal ERSF funds and everything is, uh, Clift is coming real quick, so we're going to need to be ready for that, so. With that being said, any other questions? Okay. Mr.?
I guess before we take a vote, what are we thinking for, for our enrollment, or what are our enrollment numbers looking at, like, and are we going to stick with the, um, I think approximately about 30 new students?
Thirty to 40. We have around 140 students right now. Kate updates me all, we get, we lose one, we gain one, that kind of thing. If someone moves out of the, you know, they leave, things like that. So it's around 140. That's what we've kind of had over the last few years.
Do you know what the enrollment is currently?
That's what I'm saying, it's about one.
It's a route. Thank you. I thought I saw, I thought I saw it somewhere.
140.
Oh, there we go. Thank you.
142.
142. So you're comfortable making that recommendation that we stay right around there, Dr. Gifford?
Yeah. Same numbers as previous years.
And, and to be honest, when we get our application, then we go through our lotteries and, um, a number of folks will back out. I think, you know, they're covering all bases. They might want to think, see if they can get into a, a private school or vocational school, so usually ends up, almost everyone gets in to, so far. But we'll see.
Okay.
All right. So need a motion to, uh, continue with the school choice if we so desire?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Wade.
Second.
Second by Dr. Jenkins. On the motion, any discussion? So that is to carry forward with school choice for school year 23, 24, with approximately 30 to 40 students in their vicinity, whatever it turns out to be. Okay. Chair, any, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair will oppose, just because I said I do. Thank you. So passes three to one. All right. Just come back on. Yeah. Okay. Uh, yeah, Dr. Jenk, uh, my apologies, Dr. Gifford.
That's fine. So at this time, I just want to recognize Rob Perotti. He's coming on to give us a little update on a couple of things that the department has been engaged in.
Hello, everyone?
He said he'd be quick.
Coming out from behind the scenes tonight, so. All right, so I just want to, um, announce that, uh, we're congratulating for the CS Leaders Award. This is what happens when I.
You left your post.
So we need you.
Oh, okay. If anyone can lower the iPad in the back room. There we go. All right. So on Monday, December 5th, we started out with the, uh, press conference. You might have to fix the, this. There we go. You got it, Ben? We got Ben in the back working the controls. All right, so on Monday, December 5th, we started, we had a press conference where our department was awarded, um, the $10,000 grant from code.org. In that meeting, we had, um, two visitors on that night, on that day, rather. Hannah Weisman, who was the Director of Policy from code.org, and Deborah Boisver, the Executive Director for Computer Science from Mass Inc., came down to the high school and, uh, they were given a tour of, um, our facilities. They took a look at how students are using, uh, computer programming, coding, whether there may be robotics, computer science courses. And then Ryan Aruda also had them on his episode of Ryanology, which will be out this Friday, and he talked to them about various aspects of what the department is doing with, um, computer coding. During the week of the Hour of Code last week, Wednesday and Thursday, we had a school-wide Hour of Code event where students actually participated in learning how to, um, do various coding, and they had, uh, about seven, uh, experiences that they could go through and learn what computer coding was all about, and it was a great success. And, uh, you can see our big check also went around to all the classrooms. Also during that week, our BIT department, uh, had several presentations, uh, one being with the robotics team where they talked to all of our students in our classes about how computer coding works with our robotics team and what they have to do to actually, um, code the robots to actually work and, uh, drive and compete. And, uh, it was produced by the media program and, um, all the BIT classes actually watched the video. And then we ended the week with a school-wide survey where we got various data on, um, such as, uh, what our code activities were the students' favorites, um, what classes have they taken here so far for Computer Science, and what classes would they like to take in the future. So we got a lot of great data here for the end of the week that we can use in our department. Other events that occurred in our department last week, this past week, for the first time, our media program hosted, uh, a live filibust telethon, which we partnered with Dartmouth Community Media and the Dartmouth Police Department, and we actually broadcast four hours of a live telethon at the Target store here in North Dartmouth, and we were able to help fill two large buses full of toys, as well as this year supplement that with, um, with funding. We had a QR code where people could just go, go right to that QR code and donate money to the program, and so far we raised, uh, over $3,000. That actually will be in addition to, um, the toy acceptance at the Target. And, uh, it was a great success. We had entertainment from the high school bands. We had the high school dance team performed. Um, we had, uh, various singers throughout the event perform. Uh, we had various interviews. Dr. Gifford was there as well, and, um, it was just a great success. The, the kids all did a wonderful job and, uh, we couldn't have done it without them. And, uh, again, um, we had an after-party afterwards and they were, they were quite happy of how well it went. Uh, other, um, other things that happened this past week, uh, we had, uh, an esports team that, that won the semifinals for the state, uh, and it was their Super Smash Ultimate Team that ranked second out of 52 teams in the playoffs. Uh, they advanced to the final four and were, were able to compete at a li- live playoff event, uh, on Saturday at, um, Patriots Place, and, uh, it was, this was the first time that our team had gone this far, so that was a great thing. Our engineering students built a state-of-the-art news desk for our media program, um, so I'd like to congratulate these students that you see here, Aiden Maderas, Arji, Ben Azavito, and Sophia Giosa built our brand-new news desk that we actually, this is from today. We actually use this today, filming today. Um, this is our holiday edition of our Dartmouth High News, uh, Program, and as you can see, it looks great. We actually have a video wall that will be put behind them. We have a six-panel video wall going up in the studio, uh, within the next couple of weeks that will, uh, replace the curtain that you see behind them. So it's going to be a state-of-the-art look for our, um, new news set at, uh, the DHS TV Media Studios downstairs. Uh, also in our media program, Bob's Discount Furniture donated $2,000 for new comfortable seating. Uh, the students spend countless hours editing, uh, and we want to give them, it was, this was actually the students' idea to write to Bob's Furniture to see if they would donate, um, some money for new furniture, and lo and behold, uh, they agreed. We got $2,000 and the students picked out all this furniture, and you can see they are now quite comfortable for when we edit in the classroom. So that's it for this week. That, this was predominantly all this week in the BIT department, and that's only one week. We have much more to come, but, uh, I don't know if anybody has any questions. I don't want to take up too much of your time. I do have to get back to behind-the-scenes work.
Fantastic. Anybody, any? Anybody, any question?
Thank you, Mr. Parati.
Excellent.
Congratulations. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parati.
Oh, that's great.
I think it's a pretty much guarantee that we would not have a media, Dartmouth High School would not have a media program as well-respected and well-run without Mr. Parati.
And I mean, if you think about it, too, and just go back to the tail end of the fall sports seasons with our students, Ben being one of them, you know, doing, doing the broadcasts with the volleyball games or the, the basketball, not the basketball, but the volleyball and, you know, field hockey and soccer and that type of deal. So it's been wonderful to, to see them do that. Gives them, you know, gotten them out of their comfort zone, I guess is where I'm looking, and they've done a fantastic job. All right. Doc, anything else?
No.
On the side? Okay. The only thing that I have, the only thing I have is, you know, our athletic department is back with their, went to sports, the basketball, girls' and boys' basketball team has already started, and they both won their first game, so congratulations to them. So, you know, more to, more to come on that. I know the hockey and track teams will be hitting the, the athletic complexes very shortly, so wish them well. All right. Well, okay. So, what I'm going to do is we've got, I'm going to give you 10 minutes for public comment.
Wow.
Because that's what.
Waited up for two hours.
Well, that's the way it is.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I didn't mean it that way. Okay? But that's what we have.
Well, let's stop.
So.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Gollum, and I am a teaching assistant at the Quinn School. I have been a resident of Dartmouth for over 35 years. In September, I marked 25 years as a teaching assistant in Dartmouth. I began my career working at the DeMello School Library, then I moved to Gidley and eventually to Quinn. When I began this job, I was the mother of two elementary school children, and the hours and my love of literature made it a great fit. Last June, I received the distinguished ESP award from the DEA. I speak from experience. I am here tonight because I am worried about our schools. At Quinn, we currently have two fourth-grade teachers who are both TAs before finishing their teaching degrees. Hiring TAs who are working toward teaching roles is a win for Dartmouth schools, as we get intelligent and invested TAs who learn our curriculum and are ready to hit the ground running as teachers. Last year, however, we lost two of our rock star young teachers at Quinn to more money, the sped teacher more money, and a smaller caseload. This year, I've seen promising future teachers come and go in TA positions they couldn't afford to work at the pay rate. What goes on in the day of, what does a day in the life of a TA look like? I am currently assigned as the third-grade TA at Quinn, and I spend my day moving between six classrooms. I begin my rounds with fluency drills in one classroom, supporting foundations in the next, a reading group in the third, ELA support in the next, followed by fourth-grade lunch duty. In the afternoon, I support mass centers, then two classes in writing. I conference with the students. Then I support science and social studies in my last two classes. This is the schedule my team worked hard to plan by identifying where they needed my support the most. In reality, I'm rarely able to follow this schedule for more than three days a week. In practice, my real job is to support the school's administration wherever they need me. I expect to cover for my third-grade teachers when they have meetings, and this is a seamless transition because I know their classes and their curriculum. I am often pulled to cover for teachers in other grades as well. In the past two weeks, I have substituted in the fifth and the third grade. When I was covering the fifth grade, there was a conflict as I was scheduled to administer a test to a third-grade class whose teacher was absent that day without coverage, while the sped co-teacher had to pull her kids. That meant that another TA had to cover fifth grade. Each time that I am pulled, there is a reading group that doesn't meet. There is, there, there is one, I'm sorry, a pile of work to address with students one-on-one that is set aside and one less person at lunch duty. Last Monday, 50% of our cafeteria staff was out, so I helped serve lunch. That is what TAs do. Each day... Each day, when the FYI email comes out, it is a roadmap to who is being pulled to cover for which teacher. These cascade down to whether we have enough staff in the cafeteria, at parent pickup, and dismissal. Staffing at the schools is tight, and this is what worries me. I feel as if our coverage is laced, and it stretches to meet the needs of the school. There are more and more holes to fill. A coworker at lunch told me that she had been contacted by a principal in a local town asking her to change school systems. With four more dollars more an hour, as she is a single parent, we may lose her. I am worried for the Dartmouth schools that they will not be able to compete in the market for staff. Money, that's what it comes down to. Years ago, my husband and I sat down and decided that we were okay with me working for less money, that to me, the gift of my job was the lives that I touched. Today, I see a system that is on the edge. We are stretched to the limits of time. I worry that we won't meet the needs of students on IEPs and 504s because we are short of staff. I worry that a child may choke in the cafeteria or have an allergic reaction, and there are only two sets of eyes in the cafeteria. I challenge this school committee to say, not on our watch, for you to take the steps to turn the tide on the outflow of talented staff and return to a school system that nurtures future teachers. Thank you, and please, any one of you, come and spend a day with me at Quinn. I would love to have you. Just show up. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Baldwin. I'm an occupational therapist in the Dartmouth school system for over 25 years. I have been through four superintendents and four sped directors, so I have a lot of history and a lot of knowledge of where we are right now. I'm going to address Mr. Kylie, Dr. Gifford, Mr. Nunes, Mrs. Waite, Dr. Jenkins, and Chris Oliver by name, because I want to see your eyes looking at me in the hope that your attention has been secured on this topic. When I first started in Dartmouth in 1997, we had three programs, three special education programs, one at the elementary, one at the middle, one at the high school. You know, anyone guess how many we got now? Nine. That doesn't include all the co-taught classrooms. Every grade level has a co-taught classroom or two at every grade level in every building. And we also have a pre-K program that houses 50% of disabled children. The needs of these students in the programs are severe these days, severe, from academics to life skills to self-care. I know you've heard the needs of the TAs in those programs, the social and the behavioral demands. One fact that I don't think many parents know, and I am reaching out to parents today through this media, through my social media, and I will continue to campaign to get as much parental support on this as I possibly can before I retire in June. One thing that I don't think many parents know, maybe staff doesn't even know, and maybe some of your school committee, committee members don't even know, is that on the backs of therapists, the occupational therapists, the physical therapists, and the speech and language pathologists, we bring in over $400,000 a year to the town. I know, Mr. Kylie, you and I have had discussions about this. Where does that money go? I've had discussions with finance people at Bus Street. I get it's not a straight-line item to the schools, it doesn't really work that way, so I'm not sure where the money goes. But when I asked the Medicaid coordinator if we can use that money directly for the school, the answer, since Pat Demant was the Special Education Director, is unequivocally yes, we can. We don't. We still struggle and fight to get a TA for one-to-one for a non-verbal, very autistic child who needs a one-to-one, who has life skill challenges, who has self-care challenges. We need help, and we need these positions filled. The other ti- this year, I wrote a, a letter, an email to our technology coordinator, our sped director, and our building people to ask for three iPads. I'm kidding you not, three. Three iPads with some software. We got one. I think the $400,000 maybe could have covered two more, maybe. I'm sorry to be coy, but I'm frustrated to the fact that the so, the public comment was so dishonored by you, Mr. Nunes, that you just pushed it aside. The other issue that's coming up, and I know it's been in our negotiations, and thank you to our negotiation staff who have been working tirelessly with you. I've sat in those chairs myself. It's not pretty. Looking at Walter Smith over there. It's not pretty, and it seems almost not respectful at this point, a hard no on language that costs you nothing. Our time is your dime, Dartmouth. Our time is your dime. We are negotiating to receive back this 8:45 to 9:05 time that we had. We have had that time for between regular education and special educators to consult, between therapists to consult with the special educators. Now, many of those consultation services are in IEPs, and quite frankly, we're not, we're not doing what we should be, so we're not in compliance with those laws. So I would ask you to reconsider that. I understand that there's been some miscommunication and misinterpretation of what principals think is working okay or not okay. That's all, that's all in the weeds, I get, but I, I wish that you would reconsider us getting back the 8:45 to the 9:05 time that we so rightly deserve.
Mr. Oliver, can you both finish up, please?
Yes, Mr. Nunes, I will. Thank you for your consideration tonight. Please reach out to me. Please come see the sped programs at Quinn School on a di- sometime, and you're going to knifel, for sure. Thank you.
My name's Cory Diaz, and I'm an occupational therapist. I've been in the Dartmouth schools for 17 years.
Hi, my name is Erin Monaffo, and I have been an occupational therapist in the school system for the past three years. My journey to Dartmouth started when I was a student here. I was overwhelmed by the dedication, passion, and effort put forth by the staff who taught and mentored me. Some of them are still in this room today. It made the decision to come back to Dartmouth easy. Now that I'm on the other side of that dedication, passion, and effort, I'm disheartened in the lack of recognition, resources, and compensation we receive for our expertise and knowledge. I stand in front of you tonight as one of the staff members who did not cover Dartmouth's extended school-year program this past year for the first time since being employed here. Instead, I put my dedication, passion, and effort into a school system that compensated me over $10 an hour more than what Dartmouth offered for the value I brought to their students. What's even more concerning to me is the willingness of this administration to hire external contractors who are not familiar with the families, staffs, or students to fill those positions, rather than reasonably compensating the staff. That's the same position that I could have filled, not given the disparity in compensation, but if reasonably compensated, would have been proud to do so. This is only a soundbite of a systemic problem that this 10-minute open forum is not adequate to cover. If your lack of concern for your staff's benefits and compensation is causing your staff across the board to question their value and worth, how do you think this model is sustainable for retaining talent? How do you plan on continuing to advance the Dartmouth education system and support families if you can't support your staff?
My name is Sandra Alpim Raposo, and I have been a speech pathologist here in Dartmouth for seven years. Last year, I had the experience of supervising two other speech staff members. Taking on this additional responsibility of supervising these staff members can, might have cost to me and to my students, but add a cost savings to the district. The current contract does not have additional time or language allocated to adequately meet the ethical and regulatory supervision requirements, which would allow therapists to maintain their current caseload and fulfill their other professional and contractual duties. To comply with state, federal, and credentialing regulations and mandates for all involved, the speech pathologist must take on additional weekly duties, which may include direct and indirect supervision, observation of therapy sessions, assisting in the development of clinical skills, conducting performance reviews, co-signing and signing documentation, and ensuring, and this is per the regulation which we stand by, ensuring that all the laws and regulations governing the practice of speech pathology are followed, just to name a few. By choosing not to include language within the DEA contract that acknowledges the increase in workload and provides adequate time for supervision, all those involved suffer. Within the, when the supervising speech-language pathologist or any therapist, it can include OTPT, the RBTs, when they don't have adequate time, they must choose between providing adequate supervision or providing adequate therapy to their own students. Ultimately, the students of Dartmouth pay the price, as they are being provided services by a service provider who does not have the time, skill, or supervision needed to provide their services with efficacy and fidelity. The district currently provides stipends for club advisors, building technology coordinators, and other positions that are not responsible for the direct supervision of other staff members. How can the school district feel it is reasonable and just not to also compensate speech-language pathologists who directly supervise staff with a stipend for an increased workload, which not only allows the district to fill high-demand staffing needs, but also saves the districts, the district tens of thousands of dollars? It should also be noted that most of the contractual language we were, we're seeking would come at no cost to the district. Dartmouth students deserve better, and so do the hard-working therapists who work day in and day out to make sure that their students have the highest quality services to meet their maximum potential. Thank you.
All right, our next meeting is set for January 9th, 2023. Dr. Jenkins, I'm sorry.
So, you know, I know it's not common for us to address, you know, public comment. We take in public comment, but I want to be clear, this is probably one of the hardest parts of the job, right? I want to be clear that I think everyone sitting at this table, everyone on this committee is sympathetic to the demands that you are placing. Let me speak, please.
You had your turn.
You've had your turn.
All right? We are sympathetic to the demands. I have worked so many overrides in this community to try to get more funding for our schools. We are at the bottom 10% of all districts in the state of Massachusetts for our poor people funding, right? I keep bringing up the word override, and everyone tells me, no, no. I'm not going to be afraid to talk about that, because that's what it's going to take for us to be able to do this, and we need to work together to put that message out to the community, because we can't get blood from a stone, right? There isn't a big pot of money in the town of Dartmouth that's hanging out that is not being spent, right? I am the child of teachers. I am a teacher myself, right? I am sympathetic to this. I just don't know where to go, and it's hard. I know you, it's hard for you, it's hard for us, too. We are sympathetic to what you are saying. We hear you. We're trying. That's all I can say.
Thank you.
Mr. Oliver?
Thank you for your comments, Dr. Jenkins, which I wholeheartedly agree with. You know, what's really frustrating to me is 10 years ago, when I first came on the committee, that we had this type of rhetoric going on. We certainly have this rhetoric here today. It's been going on for quite some time, and like Dr. Jenkins said, I'm in education. My students went through the, I have a junior at Dartmouth High School. I started off in this profession as a paraprofessional. 20 years ago, I was a paraprofessional. That's how I started. That's how I got my foot in the door. So I can certainly appreciate that. For those of you who are TAs, ESPs, I know the language is looking to be changed. I can certainly appreciate that, and I respect all of you. What I will say is that there's no, we're not career politicians up here. Not one of us is a career politician up on Beacon Hill. We're sitting at this table looking to do what is right for not only, number one, our students, and number two, our staff. I hear you. I certainly hear what you're saying. I respect and value what you do every single day. COVID has just made it twice as worse, but what I am seeing across the state is I am seeing a lot of ramped-up rhetoric that I don't think needs to take place, that almost just becomes counterproductive. I am here tonight saying that I will do what I can to work with you and work with the members of this committee and the members of this town. I reached out to the vice chair and the chair of the select board. I want to sit down with them. I want to have a conversation to understand what is the story with healthcare in this town? Why can't we support it? Why can't we look to alternative means than what is currently being offered? This is all, I got in this role because I wanted to. I wanted to do its best, but this is all just volunteerism. This is what it comes down to. I am, we are working. I know some, some of you may not believe it, and that's perfectly fine, but believe it or not, I can at least speak for myself that I am working on this town, your behalf, especially our parents and students' behalfes. So I'm optimistic that moving forward together, we can only do this together, that we can make things happen. It's not going to be easy. At some, to some extent, we may have to talk about, is it a change in split? And I'm, I have no place, no business talking about this, but is it a change in split? Is it a change in health insurance? Or is it employees or staff? I don't have the answers. I'm willing to work with you. I'm willing to work with my colleagues to get the answers, but in closing, we've got to do this and work collaboratively together. That is the only way that this school system is going to come out on top, which I know we can. We have a, we have a top-notch school system, and it's because of you. It's because of all of you, so thank you.
Come to negotiations, Mr. Oliver. Come to the schools.
I wish I could come to negotiations.
We, unfortunately, I have a job. I have a full-time job, and I can't. I would love to come spend the day with you. I don't have enough vacation time to do that. I'm sorry. I have to be honest with you. To Mr. Oliver's point, this is a volunteer job for us. We have nine-to-five jobs. I can't. I'd love to. I'm sorry, but I have to work to support my family as well. But I have to work to support my family as well. So do I. So does Mr. Oliver. So does Ms... Wait, we're all working. We're doing the best we can.
Okay. So, that being said, okay, anything else?
I would like to see on the next school committee agenda, a discussion about related services. I'd like to, I'd like to hear what our current related services are, our caseloads. I would like to, I'd like to have an update on related services.
Thank you.
We can do that. No problem. All right, so our next meeting is January 9th, 2023, at 6:30 here. We wish everybody a happy holiday. And we'll, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the executive session for the purposes of collective bargaining with union personnel and not return. Move by Dr. Jenkins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Oliver. On the motion, any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Yes.
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 All right. Thank you and Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, safe holidays.